All right, please all rise and join in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. [inaudible] 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 So the record reflects those who are present and will now call the roll. Village Attorney Sarah Phan.
Present.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilwoman Birch.
Present.
Councilman Melz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brady.
Here.
You have quorum.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I understand that we could have the mayor attend by telephone, but it requires a motion and a vote to find extraordinary circumstances to allow it. I would recommend somebody make that motion, second it, and we take the vote. Okay.
No, I don't.
Second.
So it's called a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Tom, is he in?
We're gonna call Thatcher in under public comment.
Terrific. All right. So the first thing I wanted to do tonight, it's very, one of the nice things that we've been doing, is the House of the Month. And this is a wonderful, wonderful way to recognize people who have gone above and beyond to, you know, spruce up their house and present it very nicely. And tonight, I wanted to, gonna be presenting to the Kuzhkanov family. If you're here, if you could please come on up. Are they here tonight? No? We're all late.
We'll make sure they get it.
Absolutely. But as you can see, their home here, beautiful home, they're in the sort of state neighborhood at a 1050 Northeast 77th Street. And we just wanted to recognize them for what they do. So we'll make sure they get their, we'll make sure they get their certificate.
My house.
Okay. So this is the, now the part of the meeting where we do public comment. I just wanted to make a brief announcement. First of all, I'm very excited to see how many of you came out tonight. I, wanna see if somebody can give me a show of hands, how many of you are here in support of Integrated Pest Management Village? Okay, wonderful.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
And so, so Mr. Mayor, for your, you know, for your information here, we have, I'm gonna do a quick count, I'm thinking, looks about 30 people. But just, that are here tonight to support integrated pest management action by the village. And the, I really want to curtail your right to be heard. The only thing I'd ask, I'm feeling extremely under the weather. And so, if, you know, if we could just make sure to, you know, come up, speak and try to, you know, speak about something unique, try not to be redundant, or if you wanna point a couple of spokespeople, but, you know, just wanted to, to mention that. So we do have a three-minute per speaker. And if anybody would like to speak, if you could please come to the podium now and just, you know, give your name and address for the record.
Mary Benton, 10108 Northeast 1st Avenue. Thank you so much for putting this on the agenda. The headlines we're seeing more and more, they don't just paint an alarming picture of the future, they paint, they paint a very dire picture of the future. A future that's gonna take everybody way outside their comfort zone. This measure is going to take us outside our kung fu zone, but really, very little. It's not a drastic thing to do. It's been done in other communities, and we can follow their lead, so we don't reinvent the wheel. I think everybody here strongly supports it. We understand that it has to be a process, a process where people are learning things, we're testing products, people are being trained, and then we can see what things, how things work, and hopefully in a year, we'll have, paint a better future for our community. Because just by stopping the use of these toxic chemicals in our public spaces, it, right there, we're helping safeguard our food and our water supplies. Because it'll provide more habitat for pollinators if we don't spray everything for mosquitoes. And it will safeguard both the marine life in the bay, having less runoff into the bay, as well as our aquifer, fewer toxic chemicals percolating down through that porous limestone. So thank you very much for putting it on the agenda.
Thank you.
[applause]
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Laura Hill, and I live at 13075 Griffin Boulevard in your neighbor's city of North Miami. I'm here, I'm so excited to be here, for this piece of policy that is so important. Our city of North Miami passed a very similar resolution a year and a half ago. So we extend, on behalf of our city and the residents there, we extend a helping hand to help you acclimate yourselves in the change. And I can tell you from our experience, some of the reservations that you may have are that the landscaping will, quality will decrease, that the prices of the pesticide alternatives will be astronomically higher. And I can tell you that my city had the same reservations. What we found, however, is that our landscaping quality did not go down significantly. A lot of times, change is hard because people don't know what to expect. And some of the patterns that we have incorporated into our lives are so, so, there's so much history behind it, that we, we get caught up in that fact of change, instead of realizing that we now have so much more knowledge, that we can, we can do better by the future. And by doing that together, as a North Dade sort of green corridor, if you accept this change, we can work together to show you, you know, one thing North Miami is doing now is we're branching from the initial step, which was organic by neglect, hand-pulling, and these types of problems, into locating and using biodegradable, organic, non-toxic products. And one of the things we've thought about doing is introducing kind of a product co-op. If North Miami, Miami Shores, Biscayne Village, El Portal was to cooperate, the cost would go down. And as we all share this area, and we all share the Biscayne River, and we all share the air, and a lot of our children play in each other's parks, the cooperation for something like this is a given. In fact, one thing I wanted to say is that we're doing something very exciting with cooperation of non-toxic neighborhoods. We are going to start renovating our Benjamin Franklin Park in the city of North Miami. So what we're expecting is to do soil tests, and then bring in some of these newer organic products, which will help rejuvenate our soil and make a lush, healthy field for our children. So I'm really excited to have our city be able to, be able to help other municipalities, and extend any kind of help to you that you would need. So thank you very much, I'm very excited that you're considering this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sam Van Leeuwen. I'm president and founder of Urban Paradise Guild, we're a Miami-based nonprofit, 13400 North Miami Ave. Excuse me. I founded the organization in 2008, and in part, it was to remove invasive exotics, which is something that is really badly neglected and still is. And I founded it to do the removal without herbicides, pesticides. I don't believe that you can poison the world to make it a better place. And it started from there. And so we've developed a family of what we call organic stewardship methods and strategies for controlling and removing invasive exotics. And we've had upwards of 50 acres of native habitat under our care at any given time at a leader of our state park. Conservatively, we've removed hundreds of thousands of invasive exotic species. Australian pines, Brazilian peppers, and the dreaded burmerid. The solutions do exist, and in addition to the North Miami model, South Miami has gone all organic, and the city of Miami is working in that direction as well. So I've had meetings with the city of Miami, public, public right-of-way agencies about how they're changing how they do things. So I really would like to congratulate you for taking this on. We're working on some really exciting pollination corridor projects, and these have the potential to prevent the extinction of butterflies by essentially tying together isolated habitats using long linear spaces. And it would be very exciting to look at how we might use, for example, the FEC right-of-way for the railroad, railroad for that. We have a, one project in North Miami that we're anticipating will be about 2.3 kilometers long. So very exciting that these things are becoming possible, and as people with vision take leadership and start to assert that vision, there's just so much that's possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Mill. I'm at 17 Northeast 101 Street, and I'm also Mary's neighbor and a member of Bombay Beauty. Thank you for hearing our agenda item this, tonight, we're very excited about it. I wanted to let you know that during Green Day, Bombay Beauty had a booth, and myself and Catherine basically just walked the streets and talked to people in our butterfly capes, asking if they were in favor of a reduction or a stoppage of pesticide use in Miami Shores. And we collected many signatures that day, and I did not reach one person that said they were not in favor of it. And then we went, did an online petition also. So between the online petition and the Green Day petition, we have over 650 signatures of people, and the online's only been out for a month, of people that are in support of a reduction or then of pesticide use in Miami Shores. And what we found very interesting, it wasn't just Miami Shores residents, it wasn't just Miami residents, we were getting petition signers from around the world, which was very inspiring to us. And I think that Miami Shores is in a very unique position to be a leader in reduction of toxic pesticides. And, you know, like Mr. Van Leeuwen said, we can't make things more beautiful by killing wildlife and potentially harming children and ourselves. So I think that we have a unique opportunity, and we should take advantage of it, and the public favor for this is, is great. And also that we have to remember, it starts at the ground, and there's the bugs, and then there's the birds that eat the bugs and the frogs, and we're a chain, and all the way, and it goes to our fruits and our vegetables and all our plants. And if we lose our pollinators, we will lose our fruits and our vegetables, and we're also, you know, becoming toxic ourselves because of what we're ingesting. So we're all part of this together, and I think it's an excellent opportunity for Miami Shores to be a leader in this, because this is the way of the world, and this is where we're going forward, I believe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jada Moll. I am a student on Barre University, and I represent Barre University and the Green Team, which is a sustainability organization that I represent. And we focus on sustainability at a whole, within the community of Miami Shores and the community of Barre University. I was lucky enough to run into Mary on, on Green Day, and learn about the change that you guys are willing to do. And I'd like to say it's inspiring that the whole Miami Shore is willing to take this opportunity. And also, seeing the change that you guys will be willing to do, I myself am willing, and as well as my organization, is willing to talk to Barre University and make them change from this example. So I just wanted to say that, and congratulate everyone here that's in support, and you guys, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Garcia, 553 Northeast 101 Street. Got a 101 quarter going on that's green already. I'm here to speak on behalf of our children, my children. I know my child also wants to speak, but I'm here to speak on behalf of children of Miami Shores, and as a mother, who is honestly extremely concerned and worried every time I have to have my kids play at the park. I'm kind of like a nervous wreck about it. And I do it, they go to the top lot, they go to the athletic field, they go all these places, but I cannot have that, that voice in the back of my head quieted about the potential dangers lurking out there with the use of the chemicals that we're spraying in our public spaces. And as Laura mentioned, change is, is really difficult, but change is really what's needed in our world. We're leaving this world to our children. It's about their health, about our health, and about the health of our planet. I, I wanna do all we can to make sure that they inherit a world that's better than ours. Our bugs are on the brink of extinction. We need to do all we can, everything within our power, to change that, and that starts with just the way we take care of our, our public spaces. So I urge you all to, to really move this forward. I wanna thank Councilperson Birch for, for sponsoring it, and everyone for their support and attention to the issue. And I wanna encourage you to really stay for the strictest measures possible, because we are talking about our health and we're talking about our home. And with that, I know my, my daughter Mariana also wants to say something.
Please.
You wanna say something, Marty? Cat's got her tongue. She wanted to say, she told me before. She said she wanted to say that she doesn't like chemicals that kill the bugs in the grass, and that she just wants to play in the yard with, in, in the park.
Thank you very much, thank you.
I was really just gonna let you by, but I wanna, my name's Angela Attento. I'm at 127 Northeast 97th Street. I echo, as a mother, what Catherine Garcia has said. I'm the mother of three as well. I actually don't go to the top lot, if I can avoid it, because I know the pesticides. I mean, that's 100% true. I go to El Portal, or Biscayne Park, or really anywhere else to avoid the top lot. I, I know what these chemicals can do. I, at our home, we are pesticide-free. We do everything we can to be, as, to create a healthy environment, and to know that now our community will be doing that as well. So I, I thank you for looking at this, and I, please, also echo again Catherine's suggestion that you do the strictest measures possible here, because this is, you know, this is our opportunity in Miami Shores to be the avant-garde, and I feel like with climate change and so many things going on, Miami Shores will be one of the municipalities or villages that people look to as a guiding light and a, a way forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Ernestine Eadne, I live at 1041 Northeast 94th Street. I've been visioned since 1969, and I raised my four children there, and they're, a lot of you know my children. And so, I don't know if a lot of you know, that about 30 years ago, my daughter Denise was brought to my house in the middle of the night, and they left the children with me, and they took her to the hospital. People have no idea what these chemicals are doing to us. If you could have seen her at times, after being sprayed around the neighborhood, as I roll to her house, and I pick her up, and she's got her head out the window, smelling, and then she passes a house that's had the law infamigated, she goes, "Oh, ma." And if you could see the black under her eyes, and she couldn't even stand up straight. What happens to bugs is starting to happen to us. We cannot keep this up. We're killing ourselves. I mean, why are we improving on God? For millions of years, he did it beautifully. Why do we have to bring chemicals into it? There are many natural ways that we can take care of this. And I encourage all of us, I don't care whether you're on the board, I don't, all of you, take care of your children, because God bless them. They're our life, they're our heritage, they're our immortality. And so let's not kill them by giving them stuff just to keep the bugs away. Stop on it!
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chad Marashi. I live at 10756 Northeast 4th Avenue, across from St. Rose. I am the owner and operator of Natural Resources Organic Pest Control. So I've actually been practicing integrated pest management for the past five or so years now. We're trying to move completely into a non-toxic pest control process. So I'm just here pretty much as a resource. So if anyone has any questions about the products that we use, or how we practice our services, I'd love to work with the city. I'm also trying to pioneer a movement within my own industry, to get my colleagues moving away from using conventional insecticides as well. So it's not really so much a matter of, of when we're gonna do it, 'cause it's gonna happen. It's just how we're gonna do it and how to make it easy, so.
Thank you.
My name is Birgit Laddie. I moved here from Paris some years ago, and I suppose most of you know that in Europe, we are way ahead of you. Glyphosate and all this stuff, I've been banned for years. We are trying to take care of our bees. So my question is, if it's possible in Europe, why is it not possible here? We really should do everything, and I mean, this doesn't only concern our pesticides and stuff, it's all the plastic crap and all that. There's a lot to do that could really, one could get better, and for our planet, for our children, grandchildren, and my grandmother, for our grandchildren's future, so they have a healthy life, clean air, clean water, and no vegetables, fruit, and so on with pesticides. So I'm, I'm brief, just.
Very good.
said. My name's Karen McLaughlin, I live at 125 Northwest 107th Street. So I'm on the northwest side of Miami Shores. I'm also trying to help the Green Corridor expand by partnering with Bombay Beauty and doing some native and butterfly planting in that part of the, of the shores as well. Just tagging onto what everyone has said, I'm fully in support of the integration from the toxic pesticides to the non-toxic and hopefully organic, and completely, as they've said, as strict as we can go with limiting the use of toxicities. A lot of people have mentioned the demise of our insect population, and I just brought this along to show everybody, if you don't get the New York Times, this past Sunday's issue of the New York Times Magazine, the front cover says, "The Insect Apocalypse Is Here." And there's a really good article, I just read it this evening before coming over, just to see, but it's worldwide, it isn't just local, so we need to be part of the solution. I think, as others have said, we can be leaders in this, not just in our local North Dade area and Dade County, but worldwide, to show that we're progressive and we're ahead of the curve, because we're already behind the eight ball. So there's no option not to do this. Our lives, our children's lives, our food, our sources, our ecology depend on insects, and if we're killing them, well, it's merely killing our, the web of life that we're all dependent upon. So just encourage you to go forward with the, with the proposal.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you all for your comments. Seeing no more public comment, we'll close the public comment period and move on to the next item.
Consent Agenda. Items are routine self-explanatory matters and are not expected to require discussion or review. Items will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by any member of the council, that item must be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If the public wishes to speak on a matter on the consent agenda, they must inform the village clerk prior to the start of the meeting. They will be recognized to speak prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Item 6A, approval of the November 20th, 2018 Village Council Meeting Minutes. Item 6B, ratification of the Federation of Public Employees Collective Bargaining Agreement. Mr. Vice Mayor, I have not received any requests from the public to pull any of the items.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, let's call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Item 7A, award of contract for the Automatic License Plate Recognition, ALPR system to Syntel LLC, and requesting additional funding from forfeiture funds. Staff on the side, and with the police chief.
Awesome. Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So you have before you, hopefully you have a copy of the memorandum I provided to City Manager regarding ALPR, ALPR. Tonight I have with me Lieutenant David McCloud from my staff, and Alan from Syntel, the company that we've been dealing with. First, before I begin, I want to thank my staff, and particularly Lieutenant McCloud, for the hard work they put into this. Because of all the assignments I had, it kinda kept me distracted, and they really did kind of the minimum work for me, so I do appreciate that. With that said, you know, we've been discussing ALPR for a number of months, in fact, a year. We put out the RFP in 2017. We awarded a recommendation to council on September 17th, 2017, to Syntel, with our primary vendor. We've been in negotiations with them since that point. And we have now presented a memorandum to you of 13 intersections that we intend to cover with the ALPR for a cost of $699,809, and that's approximate. We originally requested $500,000 in our first request, based on some old data and numbers, but this is a good number. With that funding, we'll be able to cover five of the high priority intersections, six of the low priority intersections, including three intersections which are state, state roads, and two additional intersections. And we will be able to expand the program, should that become feasible in the future, depending on our results with this company. I do wanna share with you that there are a number of uncertainties. It would be impractical for the company to go and do a complete engineering study of the intersections prior to an award, so there are some unknowns and construction costs that we are uncertain, but making a best guess at. And with that, open up any questions you may have for me.
Okay. Counsel?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Chief, I wanna thank you, Lieutenant McCloud, for all the work you've been doing on this. As, as many may not know, I, I'm in the criminal law field, as, as my expertise, and I know throughout Dade County, if not Florida, not many jurisdictions have a program like this. And I see the cost, estimated cost of almost $700,000, and I know not one penny's coming from our taxes. I applaud you and your staff, and the village manager, and everybody for doing that. And, I mean, I think things are run extremely well here, from all the interactions I have with other police agencies. I think Miami Shores is one of the best I've ever seen, and I think this is just an additional tool, tool to enhance the safety of our residents, which is an extraordinary task, and thank you for stepping up to do it.
Appreciate that, Mr. Mel.
Yeah, oh yeah, please, no questions from the floor, but that is a, we could definitely, Chief, would you mind just giving a little bit of a overview for the public certification?
That'd be fine. I know that not everybody has seen previous meetings, so ALPR is an automatic license plate recognition system, and those systems will be placed at intersections, strategic intersections throughout the city. And its primary function is it will record incoming vehicle tags, which will provide us also the information about the vehicle make and model, and so that we will be able to use that from a strategic intelligence gathering for criminal patterns and trends, and also, should we have a crime, we'll be able to rapidly identify, as in most crimes now committed by vehicles. So by putting them at key locations, we'll give our advantage to detect, be able to quick head start in, if we do have a crime.
All right, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Chief, I'm sorry, one more thing. I said it didn't come from taxes. Do you mind explaining to the residents where this money actually, and how you were able to, to get this sort of fund?
Certainly. So we have engaged in a strategic partnership with a federal partner that we've had since, going on maybe six years or so, seven years. And as part of that arrangement, any seizures or cases that we solve, that funding is provided to us directly through them, once the case is settled, or there are things that are seized and the court awards to us. And so, the courts awarded us that funding, so it's considered forfeiture money, and so we're using that money to fund the project.
Chief, in, in like regular people talk, does that mean you take the money from the bad guys to help you stop further bad guys?
Good way to put it. Those who've done things bad, they take their stuff.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Chief, one of the concerns that you had when we originally discussed this, and that we all have whenever we buy anything new in terms of technology, is the annual upkeep of this system. Has that changed appreciably since your first estimate?
It's not changed appreciably. I mean, it generally runs still somewhere between 10 and 15% of acquisition cost. cost. However, in this particular contract, unless I'm mistaken, Lieutenant McCloud will correct me if I'm wrong, we've got three years of coverage in the proposal already. So for the next three years, anything that we have as an issue will be covered.
Correct.
Correct. I am correct.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. And so, Mr. Mayor, did you have any questions for the chief?
No, I don't have any questions. And the village manager put their hard work on this. Some of the folks in the room will know this was a priority for when I first went to council. And, you know, I think this would be a lot. I hope to deter current behavior, not just more successfully eradicate those that do commit crimes in the village. And I think it's a, again, a tremendous force multiplier for our village business. And I'm just, I'm thrilled, three times thrilled, and I think it would be a lot to keep the village in this service. So I commend everybody for doing this job.
All right. Thank you very much. I know from speaking with other colleagues in other cities or municipalities here in Dade County that have deployed the systems that they've been highly effective, and I appreciate all the work you all have done on, you know, pulling this together. I'm excited to get this implemented here, and I think it's a huge step forward for our already really great public safety situation. Let's see. So Counselor, any further questions or discussion? So can I have a, somebody like to present a motion to award this contract for the ALPR system to Syntel?
I'll move to award the contract to Syntel LLC as requested by the chief.
I'll second that.
Actually, what we're doing, as well as authorizing the expenditure of the forfeiture funds, that was part of your motion, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
I thought so.
Thank you, ladies and Mr. Attorney. So if we can, if there's no more discussion, like to call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Item 7B, Discussion Impossible Action Regarding the Implementation of Integrated Pest Management for Miami Shores Village Public Spaces. This item is sponsored by Councilwoman Alice Birch.
All right. Counselor Oren?
Thank you. You know, I feel that I have both of you with me to an extent, and the mayor's not here, but I know that he's also been very supportive. And I just ended up, the ball ended up in my court because the group met with me back in September with this interest that was already really brewing throughout the community. And I appreciate that, and all of us appreciate, whenever citizens take the initiative to step out the door, talk to others, figure out that this is what they want, and move it forward to our city. And, you know, we're small, so hopefully that was easier for you than some of the municipalities that you've been talking to and considering. And I think the other thing that we're fortunate about is that other cities have been through this. And as you might have heard, let's say, when you're talking about license plate readers or just anything else, these things in government, it's a process. And the people in these other municipalities have gone through that process, and it hasn't necessarily been smooth. So while we're showing leadership by moving forward with integrated pest management in Miami Shores, we're also taking some ride on the coattails of those who have done it before. Because we know, for example, that it requires a policy that everyone on your staff understands, that especially Public Works staff. It requires oversight by your manager and consistent in understanding management. We are not in the shed at Public Works figuring out what to do about a pest problem. You know, we're not the ones. And so what we're trying to do is set policy that would guide our employees and anyone who contracts with us, what we're about and what we're thinking. And so someone in an email to me described this as turning towards something. And whenever you think about turning a ship, you know, that's a gradual process. And while, and I really respect the people that came to me because they understand that it doesn't happen overnight, and that anyone who is working with tools doesn't like their tools to be taken away all of a sudden. They'd rather experiment with another tool first and figure out how to go forward. So I'm very appreciative of all the background knowledge that I've gleaned from our residents and those, and people like Laura Hill from North Miami who's followed that really closely and look forward to, but now we've arrived at where the sausage is made. So we have to understand how this is going to evolve for Miami Shore. So I'd like to give my colleagues a chance to comment on that. And if we could get a little more volume out of the mayor, if he would like to speak. Okay. It's a high. So maybe he's in a place where he could speak louder. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to, just to make a, just a couple of quick comments here, that this is something that, I mean, I have never sprayed a pesticide or an herbicide in my yard since I've been a homeowner in about 2004. And, you know, have, you know, worked hard to understand, you know, how the natural system can work to help maintain a balance in your yard. And I know that, you know, we're dealing with challenges on a different scale, so the approach, you know, will obviously be more complex, and I think I've had to deal with at home. But, you know, one of the things that I, you know, and I know a lot of you have lived here for a very long time, I do remember, you know, growing up, that there would be tadpoles in basically every puddle after a big rainstorm. And so, I mean, I think we had the amphibian apocalypse already, you know, come upon us. We've seen that. And I think now we're seeing the biomass represented by insects, you know, radically, being radically reduced. And, you know, I think any, every little step, you know, we can take will help in that regard, but also help with our own, you know, personal health and the help of our, you know, our employees and staff that work for the village. And I would say, and I'm very glad, I, this is something I've been wanting to do, something about, I appreciate the efforts of, you know, citizens and bringing, this is the kind of thing that I know Counselor Nuts and I've also been talking about, you know, we're looking for, you know, for feedback and for some, you know, guidance for publicists on what, you know, issues we should, you know, we should spend more effort on tackling. And I'm glad that this is one that has been, you know, brought forward to us. So, Mr. Mayor, did you have any comment, you know, by no way in this discussion, anything that you would like to add?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, I mean, who wouldn't be supportive of finding, you know, non-toxic solutions that, you know, would help accomplish some of the same goals? I mean, I am 100% supportive of trying to find, you know, testing it out and trying to find solutions. You know, I'm a little concerned with, and I've spoken to the sponsors of this before, you know, there's an aesthetic for the village, and we have limited budget, and, you know, I suspect that we would not be using any of these products if they didn't help us maintain that aesthetic. Now, I'm willing to, you know, to give it a shot. And, you know, frankly, I think, I'm also ready to acknowledge that probably, you know, I don't expect that they will be as good as the products that they're currently using, but I think that I'm prepared to accept some level of sacrifice, right, a little bit of extra work if we reduce the toxicity of what we're treating the public space with. But, you know, as I said, particularly with regards to the recitals, you know, I do have a lot of concerns that if we, you know, were to eliminate, you know, all chemicals entirely, that instead we'd have, you know, a dirt patch out there. You know, we may be able to for all of our kids to play out there instead of those that might choose not to expose their kids to the chemicals that the troops use. And I don't need to sound capricious or anything else. I have two kids as well, and I have my own garden, which I grow regularly without any chemicals, you know, whatsoever. And, you know, I'm very sympathetic to this, but, you know, I'd like to try it out. My approach, my preference would be to try this out and see how it works, try it out, find it to, before, you know, you did something across the board, across the village, without any consequences. I'd say what the additional manpower cost would be, or what, you know, consequences it could have for the appearance of the village. It could pay a lot of money to lose the village because of the way it works, frankly. And I don't, I want to be very careful that we don't undermine that in the process. And I'm willing to give it a shot and test it out, but, you know, I do have resolutions and, you know, I, the risks of doing, you know, that, you know, I do want to express those, you know.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I think we all agree with you that we need to, you know, make sure to work with the other villages that have moved before us or are moving now, to learn as much as we can about what has worked and to, you know, identify, you know, some type of, you know, priority list and work our way, you know, toward where we're trying to get to. And I think the only other thing that I would say, and I'm sorry, I don't want to be back to you, is that I'm sure everybody here does not do these type of things in your own yard, and I would definitely encourage you to, you know, lead by example and talk to your neighbors and explain to them that, you know, when you see the, you know, the, any kind of, you know, lawn spraying or anything like that going on, you know, you can explain to them why it is that you don't do that, what some alternatives might be. So I'm hoping we can have more than one track, you know, going at a time here, and that the village can both help, you know, lead by example, but then to share the results of, you know, the best practices that have been effective in our particular environment here. So, sorry. Counselor Oren?
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, with your permission, I know that Councilman Nuts would like to speak.
Absolutely.
But I would like to commend you on coming up with some, some tools that I used when I was thinking about this, which came from your item on plastic straws and bags, okay? And what you said was, would you just not use the word ban? Would you start with something that, you know, we'd like to encourage? And one of the things that I saw in my research that I thought was very interesting was that while the city of Fort Lauderdale did not have a, an organic pesticide use policy on their website, they did have a really good page on how citizens in their own yards could move from toxics to organics. And I thought that was a great suggestion for us. We're developing, you know, improvements to our website, and that that would be great. But I also feel that as we go forward, we need to encourage the use of and go from a positive standpoint when we talk with our administration and staff. Because what are staff doing? They're looking for the right tool. And they perhaps want to experiment with the least toxic first, and we want to encourage them to do that, so.
Counselor Oren?
At the risk of agreeing that you all have said everything needs to be said, I'm going to say a few more things. So.
How are you feeling?
Hang in there. I appreciate it.
I'll get through it. I especially appreciate, Councilwoman Birch, what you said about empowering the citizens and the residents and trying to get, because there's been so many people who have been working behind the scenes. And I'll make a confession here, I was a roundup guy. Now, don't throw anything at me, don't hiss or anything. I said was. But it's only through listening and learning, right? And I'm but one person. I think most, everybody here falls in the category, you're informed, you're engaged, you're intelligent about it, but there's thousands of others out there who are like me. So the part about engaging our citizens, that we can make this a bifold type of, you know, initiative, that we can do what we can do as far as the village is concerned, but we have to get the word out to, to our fellow neighbors and residents. So, but, I mean, only by listening to people like Mary and Laura and Susan and Dasha, I saw Dasha come in here, and Catherine, who was in the corner keeping somebody quiet, it's just amazing. And that's what Vice Mayor Brady was saying is just, you know, seeing new people here and hearing you and knowing all the work you've done, this is what we've been asking for at least the last year and a half, because we can only do so much sitting up here. But this is the type of engagement that we're really looking for. And I heard, you know, there's other concerns in here in terms of cost. And that's one thing that I was most impressed in talking and learning from you, is that you weren't, you know, so you have to do this, you have to do this. You guys were so informed on how, step by step, we should do it. And you know the cost. I heard the cooperative, somebody mentioned it, about maybe getting together and buying, because you, or you probably do, but not everybody knows how expensive this is. And unless the people are lining up saying, raise my taxes again to do this, it's awful quiet, I don't hear that. So we have to do it smart. We have probably the best village manager in South Florida that I know of, but he can only do so much, especially with a homestead problem coming, we're losing $500,000 or...
It didn't pass.
Oh, it didn't pass. Oh, oh, wow. Why aren't you for that? Where was that good news you were going to put on the agenda? Okay. So we have plenty of money then, I guess. Is that all you said over there? So, in any event, the point is, is we have to be fiscally smart about it, but we've got to get the ball moving. So by working together, I'm really impressed. And I was having an otherwise cruddy day, but you all have enlightened it and made it, seems like it's going to end well. So, thank you.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, in order to move this on, I would like to refer you to the part of my memo that talks about the policy that I'm suggesting. Because staff has had this and understands the tenants of integrated pest management. And so one of the things that, I started by suggesting that we would expect the administration to make a transition to the discontinuation of the use of glyphosate in the village. Develop action thresholds for pesticide use. Use prevention tactics such as pest-resistant varieties, pest-free rootstock, and proper watering. Use controls that include the least risky product first, highly targeted chemicals, targeted spraying, and broadcast spraying as a last resort. The policy would also include a delegation of authority to the village manager for monitoring and enforcement going forward. So these are the basic tenants that I would love to have included in whatever kind of resolve that we can come up with tonight. And I think that they give a lot of reway to staff, but I really would like something in writing that we knew was as a result of this meeting, that everyone would know that was the policy. So that when you're approaching the totla, you know, say, for example, if anything was going to be used, or there was any kind of concern, that you would know what to expect. And the other thing is that you would never walk by and see someone using a product in a hazmat suit that was in a public space. But on the other end of the spectrum, you also know that our recitals are highly used by members of the entire northeast corridor community. They are safe because they provide the cushion that a good athletic field requires for young people to be safe on a plays field. When we were invited, let's say, for, when the recreation department and the manager was invited to, over to Miami Shores Elementary to look at their playing field, to see if we could use that as a shared space, they immediately saw that it was not a safe playing field. We've had the same circumstance at Doctor's Charter School at times, where there's a lot of maintenance that goes into that, and sometimes there are controls needed. Staff does not want to turn the ship so rapidly that we would lose that safety mechanism for students using the field. So that's why I would like us to give that policy wording to our village staff and management. and management.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Attorney?
I'm just, I'm wondering what it is exactly that you're seeking tonight? Do you want us to draft up a resolution and bring it back to you, to give you something in writing, or do you just want to adopt this policy as guidance for staff on a voice vote? What's your pleasure? Put you on the spot, don't you?
Councilwoman, what was your thinking?
Well, I, my thinking is that we, we would like to reach the conclusion, that we'd like to adopt integrated pest management, and we would like to depend on the staff and management to compose the policy, but we would like to see the policy.
In addition to that, I think I heard, and I'm not sure if I heard it up on the dais or from the audience, or both, some concern about demonstrating leadership to others, which in my mind reads as some sort of resolution that can be circulated elsewhere, see what we've done, maybe you'd like to follow suit. So it sounds like maybe we should draft a resolution that would serve all of those purposes and bring it back for adoption. Does that sound like where you're headed?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Yeah, Mr. Attorney, I think, and Councilwoman Brooks, let me know if this is what you think. I was thinking something along the lines of the way the North Miami Resolution was put together, incorporating anything in your, um, in your folder here that may not already... I believe it covers a lot of this, but, you know, it covers anything here it wouldn't cover, and, um, we're not too proud to steal. That's the best way to go. I mean, I'm hoping that we are able to steal many of the solutions to this actual problem from our, you know, from our neighbors, and then to have, you know, something in there, you know, mentioning that the, you know, that we will, you know, periodically review progress on this and, you know, make a change in policy accordingly.
Sounds good. Madam Clerk, you have all that?
Adopt IPM, direct staff and management to craft the policy and a formal resolution for Village Council consideration.
Do we need a motion to direct you to...
I think that's hears a consensus unless someone pipes up and says otherwise.
Do I think we have consensus? Mr. Mayor, any comment?
I'm down to agree with you.
So the, um, I think that that would be perfect. The only, uh, last thing I just wanted to mention is, I know anytime, um, you know, we've seen our fellow municipalities doing some work here, um, I know, I'm sure my fellow councilpeople as well as myself, I know we speak with the village manager, and the village manager has been, um, you know, in contact with the village managers, the town and city managers of the other municipalities, um, and, you know, already starting to look at some options, so if we already are, you know, a couple of steps in. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is, I know there are a lot of, um, you know, very scary and toxic, uh, chemicals that are used in different situations throughout the village. While we are now going to work to reduce that, I do want, you know, the public to know that the village manager and staff are, um, you know, try their hardest to be very judicious in application of what we do use today, and that, you know, people do recognize that it's dangerous and that our staff are trained, you know, to properly handle things, and I think this will be, um, you know, a great step in the right direction. All right, thank you. Yeah, if there's some, no more, we can move to, um, item C.
Discussion Impossible Action Regarding the Upcoming Holiday Schedule.
Council...
Mr. Manager?
Council, you have in your packet a memo from me that outlines that our two upcoming holidays, Christmas and New Year's Day, both fall on a Tuesday. Customarily, we give our employees off a half a day the day before, which would be a Monday. In past years, when this, when this particular cycle happened, we gave our employees off the entire day, the Monday. I can tell you from past experience over many years, nothing's gonna happen those two Monday mornings before Christmas or before New Year's, so we're asking that we shut the, um, the village down for those two days, obviously, except for police and solid waste control.
All right, Council, I think that's a great idea. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, so, let's see, so basically, we're just voting on approving...
Did we have the, did we want to include now the item about the January meeting?
It's on the next page.
Oh, yeah. That'll be, uh, item D, they split it apart for us.
Okay.
So, um, do we need to take it on or is it by consensus?
Take it on.
Okay. So, we got a motion, do we have a second? I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Second, we'll second it. You already seconded it, all right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
All right. The motion case?
Item 70, Discussion Impossible Action Regarding Moving the Date of the First Meeting in January 2019.
And also, as part of this discussion, um, the first Tuesday of the month is New Year's Day, and I don't think any of us want to be up here on, on January the first, so, um, what's your pleasure? I guess what I'm asking is, you know, do you want to skip that meeting? Do you want to move it to the following week? I know I plan on being on vacation the week of Christmas and New Year's, so, um, so I know there's not gonna be, and then things are already slowing down in my world, you know, in various agencies that I work with, so I don't know that there's going to be a lot of things that are pressing, but we've done this once before, perhaps if in the next week, um, we do see something that pops up that we absolutely have to have a meeting, perhaps we can call a meeting and let you all know that we have something, or if not, we'll just have the next meeting on a regular meeting, which is the 15th of January. So whatever your pleasure is, we'll accommodate.
So, Council, would we rather, if anybody has any, you know, Mr. Mayor, if you'll weigh in as well, if anybody has any preference as to if we should just skip the first meeting and have the regular scheduled meeting on the 15th, or do you want to move the meetings back one week so we meet on the 8th and the, uh, or the 2nd and 4th? Or is that gonna put that...
And where you look at it, you're gonna end up with two meetings, uh...
Back to back?
Back to back, week to week.
Well, I mean, which from my perspective, I mean, it makes me uncomfortable to just, you know, go a little four months without a meeting, right? To have two off, but it, you know, it seems crazy to have them back to back, so I think the manager's idea of having it the 15th or something comes up minimum, and one of the council members or staff is compelled to, we should have a meeting that second week in January, right? We should be able to ask the manager to set something up.
So, I would...
I agree with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would support that as well, so we're just recommending canceling the first meeting on the 1st, on January 1st, and then if there is some need for council action, probably the 15th, we can, we can call a meeting before that.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just want one thing to chime in on, if it's at all possible, because of my own, my own travel that second week to January, if we could have that, the meetings for that week, tentative meeting for that week, different schedules, for the 7th if possible, that would be a real help to me, if at all possible.
That's a Monday.
I think there's probably a good chance that meetings have happened, just to go have that.
Okay, so Monday to 7th.
All right, so noted, Mr. Manager.
Okay.
So do you, do we need to vote for this?
I understand.
Okay.
If your concerns are some good.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, if there's, uh, so there's more discussion on that item?
Item 70, Sewer System Project Update by the Village Manager.
Real quick, I know you're not feeling well, but, um, so, as far as the sewers go, all of the work is completed on the Second Avenue Sewer Project. All of our buildings, except the Catholic Charity Building, have been connected, and that one, we're in the process of finishing up connecting that building as well. We also have, um, most of the larger buildings on Second Avenue are connected, and Durham has given us, gave us a five-year window in order to connect. So the businesses along Second Avenue have got, that was a year ago, so they have four more years in order to connect, and on, right now, I just, week in and week out, I just don't have anything else to report to you. Um, right now, I know the theater building is in the process of going through the paperwork with Durham, but it's, the downtown property owners have four more years in order to hook up to the sewer, so that's where the system stands right now. The main county lift station has been conveyed over to the county, so they own it, they have to maintain it. The main lines in the alleys, as far as the water main we put in, and the sewer main have both been conveyed over to the county. We are still going back and forth with them over the wet wells that are behind each individual building. We are going out to bid for a master maintenance contract for those wet wells, so that each individual property owner will have to pay their fair share, but we will administer doing the, um, the bid work and overseeing the people that are doing it, but the people that, those 26 wet wells in downtown, and those folks are paying their pro rate a share through the tax bill every year. So that's kind of up to the minute where we're at. Again, the takeaway here is the rest of the people have four years in order to hook up, and some of them have always, have already indicated that, look, it's not gonna help my business, um, I'm not hooking up till the last minute, so I just want to let you know that that's where we're at.
All right, thank you, Manager. Any other questions from the Council?
Uh, Mr. Manager, thank you very much for those updates, it was one of the highlights of my, my week, and I'm sorry to see them go, but I understand we're gonna take that off the agenda, and will no longer be a standing item, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Item 7F, supplemental item, a resolution of the Miami Shores Village Council authorizing the village manager to execute the Federal Emergency Management Agency Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, application documents, and to administer the grant. Staff on this item, it's the village manager.
And so, Mr. Manager, are you excited to see this?
You know, yes or no? No, we knew we were in the hopper for this grant. In fact, we're number 21 out of 100 in FEMA's list, so we feel pretty confident about that. What we did know is I needed this resolution so that I could sign off on any paperwork, so if you all could please pass this resolution. So it authorizes me to, um, sign any paperwork involved with the project. This is, um, Shores Estates, a drainage project back there. We originally applied for $1.5 million, and now we've upped it to $1.9 million, so we're in the hopper for at least 1.5 out of this. So if you could pass this resolution, it will help me hopefully get us some money.
Mr. Vice Mayor, as mayor during the time that I waded through the sheet flowing the Biscayne Canal into Shores Estates, I applaud the manager and the work that we've done with, on getting this close to this grant, and I'm happy to sponsor the resolution 2018-29.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Do we have any, any more discussion on the, on the motion at hand? Mr. Mayor?
Look it down.
Okay. So it's called a question. All those in favor, would you go for approving the resolution? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Resolution passes?
Announcements, the village's annual winter festival celebration is scheduled for Friday, December 7th, beginning at 6:30 PM. The village's annual caroling, hayride, and light up the village event is scheduled for Tuesday, December 19th, also beginning at 6:30 PM. Please contact the Recreation Department for additional information and details on either event. Village offices will be closed on Monday, well, Monday, December 24th, and now, I guess, also Tuesday, December 25th, and December...
31st.
31st, and then January 1st. There will be no garbage pickup on Christmas Day, instead, the garbage and recycling route will be run on Wednesday, December 26th. Our normal schedule will be run for New Year's week. Please visit the village website for more information on village events, departments, and to sign up to receive agenda notification. Item 9, Village Council Comments.
Council? No comments.
Oh, seriously. Mr. Vice Mayor, with your permission, I would like to comment about Plaza 98, which comes up this Saturday night as a reprise of the wonderful downtown festival that we had last year. We have a lot of help in this project from the Chamber, Public Works, our, our own people that come out, everybody that, um, came last year and enjoyed it. We're having, uh, on Saturday night, starting at 5 o'clock through 8:30 PM, we will be having, um, some really great entertainment, as well as, um, some activities for adults and children alike, and there will be food vendors there. And we have, um, gotten some different people to come and provide food and beverages. Uh, we're looking forward to having people turn out. It was such a great thing last year, and it really gets our downtown working, and our downtown businesses get exposed to, um, activating, uh, Second Avenue on a Saturday night. And I want to thank all the people from the Chamber and, um, and the village that are working on it, the Downtown Committee of the Chamber particularly, too, and I hope to see everybody turn out, um, as well as on Friday night, which everyone always comes to that, because Santa has to come, and we have to meet him. So I'm looking forward to the coming week, and I thank everybody who came out tonight about, um, integrated pest management, and I'm really looking forward to moving that item further when it comes back to us whenever in January, so, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor?
I'll be brief. I mean, great meeting tonight, so excited that some red flags came out and gave the opinion. Again, it's been said, I think by multiple councilmembers, but it's very great to see this ground swell, our topic's a very special issue, and it's important, I'd love to share some of that, but so often it's just like the council and the regulars in the chamber, it's nice to see an issue that people are passionate about, and the chance to get things done, to put my own words. I'm again excited about the tourism and that initiative, and again, thank the staff and the department for their hard work on that, and really excited to attend the village, which was Plaza 98, and the farmer's market, which was awesome last weekend, and the winter fest on Friday night. I mean, it is chock full of fun stuff to do, so I hope everybody's set the calendar to see what things to do in our schedule and weekend.
Thank you. And I'll be, I just wanted to thank, you know, Council, staff, and the citizens for, you know, really making it a pleasure to come out here and do this. Um, you know, I really appreciate that, it's been, um, it's been a, you know, great experience working with you all, and hopefully you're continuing to do so. The only thing I just want to say, since we're not gonna meet again till next year, is, you know, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and have a very happy new year, we'll see you next year.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I just...
Sure, absolutely.
One more quick announcement, I know if you all heard, but our very own Commissioner, Audrey Edmondson, was named Chairwoman of the, uh, Deade County Board of County Commissioners today, so...
Congratulations.
She's our, she's our board chair.
Wonderful.
Wow.
Wonderful, well deserved. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Manager, thank you all, everybody. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Great job.